Okay, welcome to the committee of the whole meeting of the Springfield City Council. It is now 3:37 on Tuesday, June 16th. We're joined by members of the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission, who will introduce themselves momentarily. In addition to that, I'm joined by my colleagues, Counselor Allen, Counselor Brown, Counselor Davila, Counselor Gomez, Counselor Ramos, Counselor Letterman, and I believe I let in Counselor Fenton. Looks like he might just be connecting to audio with his glass of wine on the water.
Water.
Just kidding. So Vanessa or Josh, I'll turn the show over to you, Mr. Schimmel, and we can go from there.
Thank you. Thank you, President Hearst and all members of the City Council. Thank you specifically to Councillors Letterman and Davila for your advocacy at the local, state, and federal level. I understand most of you, if not all, have signed on to these calls for assistance, and therefore, thank you as well. I'm grateful for this opportunity because it provides another space to be clear about the needs of our water and sewer system. There have been proposals submitted to the commission since our last meeting, and a petition was circulated by Counselor Ramos to freeze our rates. You will see from Josh's presentation that all of the proposals submitted have been tested and presented to our third-party partner, which is a national firm that specializes in water and sewer budgeting. We have also deferred maintenance, deferred projects, and taken on more risk to land at the current proposed 9.5% rate increase. The petition signed by residents states that the rate increase is unjustified. I want to be very clear with you that that categorization of our work is not an honest response to the concerns of citizens. That's because we're not just running a water and sewer system. We are actively trying to avoid another public health crisis. We are actively trying to avoid a catastrophic failure. So my question to you is just, is how justifiable is the loss of water? And whether or not it's justifiable to disseminate misinformation? It would actually be a dereliction of duty on our part to freeze rates or to inadequately fund our utility. I understand and appreciate how COVID-19 is affecting households. I also understand and appreciate that as the Chair of this commission, I cannot and will not risk another public health crisis. I'm not running for office. I'm serving as a private citizen with the truth about the current state of our infrastructure. I ask you once again to continue to stand with us shoulder to shoulder to advocate for and properly inform citizens of our current needs. We are willing to provide you with the information you need to truthfully answer the calls of your constituents. And to that end, Josh will provide you with answers to questions submitted since our last meeting.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you.
So I appreciate those comments, Chairwoman Otero, and thank you, Councillors, and President Hearst for allowing us to come before you again and discuss some of these really important issues. And we're glad to do it. Each year, we've tried for many years to have public participation. And again, here we are, not the exact circumstances we've really been looking for, but we're glad to be part of the process and glad to have you folks as part of our process. So I'm going to try to share something here. I do, we do have some other folks on the call here. Anthony Basile, Dominic Pellegrino, and David Hyder, to just name a couple of them. And Jamie Bartek, I see here too, as our Communications Manager. Tony is our Comptroller. Dom is our Director of Finance. And Mr. Hyder is part of a consulting team that we utilize to validate our processes. So I may throw questions their way as we go. We've prepared a brief presentation to kind of address the proposal that Counselor Allen has put forth to us. And we're going to go through that in some level of detail with a little bit of background. And then we got some additional questions from Counselor Allen yesterday and a few more this afternoon. And we're going to try to get to all of those as well. And then any other questions from the field of Councillors, if that works. So just let me try to share my screen here and see if we can do this. How are we doing so far? I'm going to try to...
I got it, yep.
I want to do a slideshow from the beginning. How's that? You guys got that? Okay, so I've lost all of you somehow, but you can hear me, okay?
Yes.
Yes, we hear you.
Yes.
And is this view sufficient, or was the other one better? It's hard for me to tell.
Either one is fine.
Okay.
Maybe, Jim, if you could maybe just increase it a little bit more? Or I guess I could do it myself on my phone.
How's that?
That's good, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so here we go. I'd like to see all you guys, but I can't figure it out. So again, thank you. There's a proposal outlined here by Counselor Allen that proposes a one-time reduction in cash requirements for increased borrowing and use of the stabilization fund. We're going to get into that. I do want to talk a little bit about some of the things that are in this. So the proposal itself talks about an additional $2.2 million of borrowing, and that's taking revenue-funded projects and pushing them into a loan at an interest rate, and then additional use of the stabilization fund to a total of $3.4 million of reduction in cash requirements for fiscal year '21. So we're going to jump into this. I'm pretty good. If you guys need to jump in while we're going through this, that's fine. Just understanding that there's quite a bit of information here. So I do want to talk a little bit about water industry-specific strategies that are a little different than other business models, and to be clear. So there's a considerable amount of nuance and complexity for utility budgeting and how that affects rate structure. So, you know, problem-solving in any single year is not a responsible management tool for the water utility agencies. The process has to include, you know, looking to the future and the impacts on future years. So some fundamental considerations to look at in terms of budget and rate-setting factors are the use of asset management fundamentals. And really, what this means is understanding what your infrastructure is, the condition that it's in, and what the needs are for your infrastructure. And we've spent the past four years really, really focused on understanding that. Then you need to understand the regulatory drivers. We're one of the most highly regulated industries around, and you need to know what our compliance initiatives are and what the future regulations are, look like. And that is being plugged into the regulatory environment. And then you need to prioritize our capital investment strategy and understand the risk and consequence of failure. We talked, Commissioner Otero talked a little bit about, we've assumed a little more risk in some of the deferments that we've undertaken just this year, as well as other years. And there's a risk associated. And I want to point out, to be very clear, that risk isn't necessarily just a financial position risk. It is an actual physical risk associated with our inability to deliver water and sewer service. And it is a real risk. We have failing infrastructure. We experience this almost monthly, and it's a significant issue for us that requires continued investment. And then when you roll all those things up, you need to be able to balance the schedule of implementation and its affordability to your ratepayers, and its affordability to us as the agency that is undertaking this investment. And then lastly, it's got to be sustainable. It's got, you have to have a long-term vision, and you have to be able to make it work indefinitely forever. And so a single-year solution cannot be looked at in any year because we have to look at the future. And even in this year, where we all know the impacts of what's going on, and it's not business as usual, and we're acutely aware of that, we still need to have a steady, stable, and sustainable outlook to what the rate structure looks like for our customers. And that's what we're doing. And some of this is repeat, folks, and apologies for that, but it's really important to kind of set some of these fundamentals as we look at evaluating this scenario. So, you know, the specific metrics that we evaluate are, and this is a list of the major ones, but there's more. It's structural balance, and that speaks to having an overall revenues that are in line with our expenditures. A one-time fix, again, that's being proposed, does not work for the long-term needs for expenditures. Then, we've talked about this a bunch. We need to be able to meet our debt service coverage requirements, critically important for the rating agencies, critically important for our capacity to borrow, and we do not want to risk changing our position financially. And that has a lot to do with the debt service coverage. We need to maintain cash balances. That goes without saying. And then we need stability in the rate structure, which is what our goal always has been and always will be. And we need to minimize rate spikes. We don't need any sticker shock moving forward. So there's numerous sources that weigh in on best practices for budgeting specific to the water sector and all of them. And I'm really detailing this, Counselor Allen, because there was a lot of mention of industry practice in the proposal. But the water sector and utility business is different than many other business models. So I just really want to point out and specify that there are a number of sources that talk about capital funding, best management practices for utilities, and then specific to water utilities. And there's a long list of them, and we follow them all fairly closely, as do our consulting team. And as one in particular here, you know, they're saying you can't be over-leveraged with the amount that you're borrowing. You can't accrue debt for everything you do. You need to be balanced. You need to pay cash and revenue for certain projects, and you need an appropriate amount of debt. And the rating agencies, and this is an example right out of a Fitch guidance, they consider you to be very strong. If 50% is leveraged by debt, mid-range would be 75%, and that's exactly where we are. And then you're weaker if you're in that 90% or more range of your funding is going to debt. So the lower the percentage that you're leveraged, the better. Goes without saying, but I just want to be clear on that. So I want to talk real quickly about financial position, and we're in a good financial position right now. We've worked really hard over the past four years to get there. In the past four years, we've established financial policies that we never had before. We established the stabilization fund that we never had before. We've got a ratings upgrade because of those two policies that we've enacted. And we've established a long-term strategy that the ratings agencies have embraced and understand. And, you know, we've previously sent the council our S&amp;P rating summary, and those reports speak to our strong position due to our management strategies, but they also identify and speak to the risk associated with our business, and in particular, our situation here, having certain customers that are a large portion of our revenue, et cetera. And we've already spoken about it, so I won't spell. Now, some of the common tools that are utilized when we're budgeting and we're evaluating the different scenarios and alternatives each year in the budget are we look at funding sources. Is it revenue-funded? Is it SRF-funded? Is it going to be some other federal loan? Are there any grants? Is it going to be just pure debt that we're going to issue through bonding? And so we look at that. We look at the schedule of when those projects are going to take place. Can we move them in? Can we move them out? Does it make sense to package them, or should we defer them? And those are typical that we do for every project, every group of projects. And we do it every year, every budget season, every budget, every project. And then we look at the risk consideration and mitigation in terms of moving things in, moving things out, deferring them altogether, or repackaging them in any way, because there's some risk that is assumed with each of those items. And then lastly, we look at, can we have a reduction in the services we provide? And I think that is common in many other parts of government. But in the water sector, there's not a whole lot of service that we can reduce. You guys flush your toilets, you want it to go away. We know that because we get the phone calls when it doesn't. You turn your tap on, and you want a clean glass of water, and we provide that. And so reduction of services is something we consider, but it's not something that is typically part of evaluating alternatives in budgeting for the water sector. So, and there were some questions in some of the questions, Counselor Allen. And so I just wanted to be transparent, which I think we always have been. But here's our, going back to 1990. So you have 30 years' worth of rate history here. And I think you particularly were paying attention. Can you guys see my mouse moving?
Yeah.
Okay. You were paying particular attention to, you know, the years down in here of recent, these 959976. And then in 2016 through 2019, we were really focused on that asset management piece, where we were really trying to figure out getting an accounting of our assets and the condition that they were in before we started spending money so that we weren't spending money without knowing all of our needs. We are in a position now to know all of our needs, and that's now. But I also want to point out to you, from 1990 to 2001, there was not a single rate increase. Not a single rate increase in 1990 to 2001. So we're making up for that. There is no getting around that. And so it's important to understand that these systems, they're aging, and they require constant investment. So I also want to speak a little bit of our five-year capital plan because in order to make any decisions, you have to have insight into the future spending and CIP. So, and we have a lot of it on the books, and we have a lot of it in front of us, and it's been laid out in a thoughtful and responsible manner. We presented that in the budget hearing last week. We've presented that to you in some form at the last meeting. And if you look at our spending over the next five years, you can see that we are solidly in that 70% to 75% range of issuing debt for more than $250 million. Okay, so we'd like to be lower. We'd like to be in that 41%. We don't have a choice. We have work that has to get done. So I'm showing you all of this work, but that's in addition to $122 million river crossing that's taking place right now. They're out there now building that project as we speak. There's $111 million up at the water treatment plant. That's not included in this $260 million. There's $31 million at the wastewater plant. That's already on the books. That's not included in this current $260 million program. The majority of these investments, as you can see, are in concurrence with the industry practices and standards for debt and debt service and debt coverage as we move forward. Okay? So, give me half a second here so I can catch my breath. Okay, so again, getting back to Counselor Allen's proposal, $2.2 million of packaging projects and using debt service and accruing interest on $2.2 additional million and adding additional utilization of the stabilization fund. So we can look at this in some detail, but more importantly, as we have discussed, you got to look at the future years. So for us, it is never a single year. So I just want to speak a little bit to how this works for us. So we have several established models that we utilize to plug in either specific projects or the overall budget. And they contemplate and analyze a number of those key, a number of those key items that we talked about before. Debt service coverage, structural stability, et cetera. And so debt service coverage being one of the most important things that the rating agencies look at, and one of the things that is hardest for us to maintain, and one of the biggest drivers in maintaining your debt service coverage is your rates, and it's that ratio of your revenue to your debt service coverage. And so utilization of cash on hand does not help your debt service coverage. And that is a factual statement. Debt service coverage is the ratio of your revenue that you're generating, not cash that you have in the bank, but revenue that you're generating to your debt service. And that's a really important factor. So when we look at this proposal and plug it in exactly for what it is into our budget, here's what we come up with, okay? In red, in blue, is the 95 rate proposal. In brown is the 55 rate proposal. And what you see here in this horizontal line here at 1.5 is what our financial policies say. We should be at 1.5 always, and it should never dip below 1.5 for more than three years. And that's because dipping below 1.5 for three years when you're undertaking significant capital projects is acceptable as long as you show you're coming out of it at the other end. The other, the yellow line, as you can see here, this is 1.4, which our bond covenants explicitly say that if you drop below 1.4, you need to hire a third-party firm to evaluate your financial position for those bonds, okay? So when we plug in the scenario that was proposed, immediately in 2021, we're below 1.4, which triggers this reporting requirement. We're also below 1.4 in the years 2028, 29, and 2030. But in every year, '21 through '2030, we're below that 1.5 requirement. This does not work. There is no way around it. Doing the proposal puts us below, it violates our own policies. It puts us at a risk of, this puts us at a particular risk of being downgraded by the financial agencies. So, and I would like to add additionally, there's another mechanism where we don't have a horizontal line, which is at 1.25. If you drop below 1.25, you can no longer issue debt. And so when we're starting to hover at 1.35, at 1.3, you are not far off of 1.25. And that risk is real, and that risk has substantial impacts. And we're going to, we'll talk about those in a couple slides. So we talked too about our operating fund and structural stability. In blue again is the 9.5, and in orange is the 5.5. And these are plugged in and analyzed exactly as they've been proposed. And what you see here in blue is, in 2021, we're okay. In 2022, we're okay. In 2023, we start to dip below what our goal should be at for operating funds, right? You can see, we're dipping, but we can make this up, right? We have three years to make this up and come up with alternative plans and other funding sources and all the things we do every year where we see that we have projected gaps, but we work towards making those up because we have time, because you have two years to work towards it. When you plug in the proposal as it has been submitted to us, we immediately in '22 start seeing a negative trend in terms of our operating fund balance, to the point where we have a $30 million deficit a few years out from now. So this does not work. There is no way around it to make it work. When you look at things beyond a single year, this is what we do in our process every year. This proposal does not work. I don't, it would put us at significant risk and a number of factors. And I'm going to go on because I think, you know, I'm not trying to beat this to death, but I want to be very clear. So the impacts of debt coverage violation are a couple-fold. So we already talked about where our financial position is now, what we've worked for for the past five, six years to get into our financial position with an upgrade to our rating. That has allowed us to borrow money at a cheaper rate and allow us to deliver projects more effectively, more cost-effectively, and at lower rates, rate increases to our customers. When you start to violate our financial policies and then violate our bond covenants, there's a strong likelihood of being downgraded from the financial rating agencies. And what happens when you get downgraded? Well, when you issue bonds, you issue them at a higher rate. So your interest rate goes up. You're more of a risk. And so you can just see here, in that $260 million worth of work that we know we have to do, going up a quarter point over 20 years is a $17 million hit. It would cost us $17 million more. If the economy continues to be volatile and unstable, and say we go, our rates go up a half a point from where they are right now, that's $35 million. That downgrade is a real risk, and the risk of these numbers being additional to what we're projecting is real. So there were some questions about what our five-year rates look like. This is what it looks like right now. We don't beat around the bush here. We're doing a 95 this year. It looks like a 95 as we stand right now for next year, then an 85, and then we start to recover a little bit here in 55s and 45s. Some of that is that we're putting some debt to rest, and we can work on this. That's what we do every year. We work on it, right? So, but if we do a 55 this year, and you want to keep the 85s and 55s in the out years, it means a 14.5 next year. There is, this is pretty simple, this is pretty simple math from a ratings standpoint. So these are the results of a 55, what it would look like next year to stay solvent as an agency. And this is what we have on the books proposed in our current plan. So we talked about sticker shock and rate stability. 95 and 95 to me is better than a 55 and a 14.5. And when you do the 55 and the 14.5, don't forget about all that additional risk you're taking on because that risk is real. So what does all of this mean? Well, I can tell you as Executive Director that that risk is a $3.67 savings per month for each of our residential customers. So at $3.67 a month to our residential customers versus the potential of an additional $35 million worth of cost to do the same amount of work, it's not something I'm going to recommend. It's not something we can do as responsible managers of a utility. So again, I want to rehash this. This is plugged in exactly as it was proposed. This is switching revenue-funded projects to bonded projects that will accrue interest over a 30-year plan, I believe, is what was suggested. Additionally, I would add that many of the projects that were suggested in that list, those projects specifically that were called out do not have a 10- to 15-year life cycle. And so we would be accruing debt on something that would be 15 years beyond its useful life. So without going into detail, and if you folks want detail, I'm certainly capable of speaking to it. There were projects on there that had a 10- to 15-year life, which we focus on those projects to pay revenue because those are good projects to pay on the short term and pay cash for because they're short-lived. And so in that regard, many of the projects in that $2.2 million don't even fit categorically what the industry standard is for accruing debt. And then additionally, I think we're very clear on utilization of the stabilization fund is a one-time fix, but it's just a deferral. Because of this revenue, the revenue ratio, the revenue-to-debt service coverage ratio is about revenue. Cash on hand doesn't necessarily solve that problem. It may drive a rate down in any single year, but it just means you have to make up the revenue piece of that in the following year. And I hope I am somewhat clear on that. And then, guess what? I'm done. So I do, I want to take questions. And then I also, Counselor Allen, I do have the questions that you provided here today and the day before, so I can run through those. But why don't we take any questions on the presentation first?
So I will defer to Counselor Allen first. And then I will go in order of those who have their hands raised. So Counselor Allen, if you want to ask a question at this time, you can feel free, or if you want me to circle back to you, I can do that as well.
Hey, why don't you circle back? Because I asked a lot already of Josh, and I've got two or three as a result of the presentation, but I like to hear from other people, see where they are.
Sounds good. Counselor Davila, I see you have your hand raised. You and Mr. Schimmel, if you could stop sharing your screen, that would be appreciated. Counselor Davila, so on you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Schimmel, for that wonderful presentation. I find your presentations to be very thorough. I do have several questions, but for the interest of time, I'm going to try to be as brief as possible. I guess the first thing that jumped out to me was the bond rating. Is the commission's bond rating separate from the city's bond rating?
Yes.
Okay, very well. Now, it seems to me that, as you quoted before, Mrs. Schimmel, we are now paying for the lag of rate increase between 1990 to 2001. There was no rate increase, correct?
During that timeframe, there was no rate increase. You know, I wouldn't attribute all of the current rate increases to the period of time when there were none, although I think I was actually working here at the time. I hate to say that, but in a different capacity, by all means. But I think the rate increases that you're seeing now have to do with the fact that we have a very large system and a very old system, and it requires a lot of TLC. And that comes in the form of investment. And so I would rather speak, let me just finish this. I would rather speak to the fact that we know what we need to do because we spent three years investigating our system and our system needs, and we've identified what we need to do to the extent that we reasonably could. And we've mapped it out, and we've mapped out a way to do it as cost-effectively as possible. So, that's what we're paying for.
Right, I understand that. And that, in and of itself, troubles me. That's roughly 11 years without any increase, and at the time, they had to know that we had a decaying infrastructure. So, I, I honestly am a little ticked off to hear that there was no increase in that time, because now we're really paying for it, and we're paying for it at the worst time that we possibly could. But, you know, I do have hate that going forward, under your leadership and Commissioner Otero's leadership, that this is not going to happen. And so I guess, circling back to the rate. I, I see that Councilor Allen very kindly put up a proposal of 5.9. It seems to me that you're suggesting that 9.5 is absolutely bore the, the minimum bare bones that we have to do in order to continue operations. If that's the case, then I have to ask the question, why the initial proposal of 6.9? So if we really need 9.5, why did we have the original mom of, of a proposal of 16.9?
Yeah, we, we explained that at the last meeting, Counselor, and I think that's a very fair question. And that was based upon projections, because our budget is based upon use projections. And the projections from what we had, if you remember the graph we put up last, at the last meeting, we had a substantial drop in, in water use going back to mid-April. A 20%, 15% to 20% drop in water use, right when we were putting the finishing touches on our budget. Our budget every year is based upon trends and usage trends, and the bottom had dropped off, dropped out from us. And so, we had to use trends as the tool that we set our budget to. So, we had to do revenue projections based upon what the trends were of usage at the time. And we were basing it purely on usage, not on billing, because it was the middle of the month. And so, we had to, we had a statutory requirement to put the budget out. We put the budget out with the best information we had. We knew, you know, it's not like we were oblivious, let's sneak a 16.9% rate increase in, in front of the world. That's not what the intent was. The intent was, we had a statutory requirement to do it. We knew we would be able to get more information. Quite frankly, we thought it was gonna be worse. I, I have to say that. We put a 16.9% rate increase out there, and we thought when we got the, when we got the April data in early May, that we thought it was gonna be worse than that. Fortunately for, for everybody, the use has picked back up, and now we're right where we, right where we should be. And it's actually been a really dry spring to date, which is working out well, because the revenue projections now are good. So, that's the difference between the 16.9.
Right. I, I think you guys are, we are between a rock and a hard place here. And I do, Commissioner Otero's initial comments, statements did resonate to me. I agree with her, you know, if we are lacking water, that's gonna create a crisis, one that we can definitely not afford. So, I do have other questions, but Mr. President, if you circle back, I will at the appropriate time ask.
Thank you, Councilor Davila. I do not see any other questions in the queue. Are there any other questions from counselors? If so, if you could please raise your hand in the queue. If not, yes, Mr. Schimmel, go ahead.
Can I get in the queue for one second? I just, I, I do want to talk just real quick, so there's time. But just in speaking to that lack of rate increases from 90 to 2001, I do, you know, I, I want to be clear though, just to say, in, as an industry as a whole, the water sector, there was a lack of investment over the past 50 years by everybody. This isn't a problem unique to Springfield. This is, this is a national problem, because back in the 70s, we've, we've been through this, there was federal funding. 90%, 75% funding of all of these projects. And when that went away, so did all of that maintenance, right? So, so people weren't spending the money, because they were used to getting it free or, or paid for. And so, when the money dried up, so did all the work. And so, what you're doing is, you're just, you're paying back. The country is paying that back now by not having any federal or state subsidy to the water sector. That is the simplistic truth to where we are.
Thank you. Counselor Ramos, followed by Counselor Letterman. And Mr. Schimmel, you have a hard stop at 4:30. Is that accurate?
I do, I do.
Okay, all right. Just so counselors are aware, Counselor Ramos and Counselor Letterman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thank you, Mr. Schimmel. I thank you, members of the Water and Sewer Commission, for meeting with us once again on this issue. As you all know, I submitted a petition this morning with 959, 956 signatures from people asking the commission to, number one, oppose the 16.9% increase, and, and secondly, vote in favor of a rate freeze. I did that in response to the number of phone calls and emails that I've received from concerned citizens. I'm not the only one. I'm sure that my colleagues have also received similar concerns. The petition called the 16.9, 16.9% increase unjustified. And given the response that we were just given, and the fact that you are now seeking a 9.5% increase and not, no longer seeking the 16.9%, then by definition makes the 16.9% proposal unjustified. So I thank you for, you know, looking deeper into your budget and, and continuing to make adjustments. You know, this is our first request that we made at our first meeting. You know, people look to the city council, although this is not an authority of the city council. We don't have any authority over adjusting the rates of the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission. People look at us as our, you know, their, their closest leaders that they can reach out to whenever they have concerns. And I took it upon myself to do something in response to the, the concerns and the complaints that I've received from our residents. And, you know, people came together and, and signed that petition, so I'm grateful for that. I'm concerned, I'm even more concerned now, after looking at your future projections, you know, to see that this is not just a one-time increase, that we're talking about several increases going into the next few years. And considering the fact that Council Fenton put together that graph at our last meeting to show that rates have already increased over 50% in the last six years. So, you know, there has to be a better plan. We can't just rely on customers to be the only source of income. There has, there has to be another way. And I don't think that we're gonna be able to resolve this at the municipal level, you know, which is why I signed on to the resolution, and I co-sponsored the resolution, asking the state and the federal government to get involved and to help the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission with funding. And I think that's the solution. And you just mentioned the fact that federal funding was a big part of your revenue and, and a big part of your budget before. And I just wonder how, how we get there again? How do we get to a point where we can have more assistance from the federal level and from the state level? Because it should, the customer should not be the only source of income, and there, there has to be a better way. So, do you have any specific proposals for the federal legislature and/or the state legislature to help the funding of Springfield Water and Sewer?
Yeah, I mean, I, I can speak to a couple of things that would address some of Counselor Allen's questions as well. I mean, we don't have a specific act or bill that's written just for the Water and Sewer Commission. We, we don't have that. I think that we, I think, you know, I can clearly say, we could all do a better job in terms of pushing from a legislative standpoint on the state and federal level of trying to get funding. And I'm pretty active in, in that, and, you know, we're just, we're, we're busy. And it's always really hard to struggle to coordinate all these activities. But I would say that we are very much plugged in on the state and federal level in that regard. And, you know, I can just, I can roll off, I can roll off a couple of things real quick. I do know the HEROES Act that is now coming out of the House does include $1.5 to $3 billion for a program for low-income subsidies for water and wastewater. That still has to make its way through the Senate. So, there is, there is some, some traction in the House anyway for the HEROES Act. And again, we've already talked about this. We have a very similar program. We're gonna run ourselves, the Customer Assistance Program. We spoke about it last time. Also, there is some information, there are some monies that are being pushed into the Water Resources Development Act, the WORDA Act, which is specific to the water sector. And so they're gonna try to use that as another mechanism to get funding to flow into the water, so to speak, flow into the water and sewer sector. They're talking about doubling that right now, and that would go from, it's basically funded at $2.5 billion now, and they're looking at pushing that up to $5 billion. But these are all of our elected officials that need to push these things through. And then there, there, although the Transportation Act is something that is a mechanism for funding, it virtually never includes water sector. And when we talk about the infrastructure bills, we are part of a large group of water sector utilities on a national level that really push and advocate for the fact that when, when our government talks about infrastructure, it's not just bridges and highways and roads, it's also underground infrastructure. It's water and wastewater. So, in that regard, we do that. I think, you know, the good thing is, we have a little traction with you all. We have some traction with our legislators, state and federally. I think the important thing is that we regroup moving forward, and we can lean on you folks a little more to help voice that, and we can coordinate that activity a little more. And I think altogether, our voice will be a little louder and resonate a little more with the state and the federal government.
Counselor Letterman, followed by Counselor Gomez. And if counselors can just be mindful that we only have 12 minutes remaining. So, if we could be as brief and succinct as possible, it'd be greatly appreciated.
But thank you, Mr. President, and Josh, thanks for being here and such thorough analysis of the challenges that the Water and Sewer Commission faces. I certainly have been on the record in the past meetings relative to the fact that when we look at some of the issues, other water systems that face across the country, and a lot of that was because of mismanagement. And so we know how important the sound management that you are providing is to ensuring safe deliverance of that water. My question is, is with regard to the current proposals that are, that are being considered by the commission and any deferred maintenance that you've talked about, how will that impact the conversations that we had previously had around the HAA5 contamination and the fixes that are necessary to get our plant to a point where we can eliminate that?
Yeah, great.
How's the timeline impacted?
Yeah, great, great question. We're not deferring things that have to do with water quality, right? So, I, you know, we, we talked about it on this presentation. Anytime we defer something, there's a certain risk. There's a regulatory risk. There's a health and safety risk. There's a water quality risk, and we balance all of that out. So, we have not deferred any of the, any of the major items that will affect water quality and the work that we're doing up at the water plant. We deferred one project where it actually made sense to repackage it in with a larger project, because we would have cost eligibility for SRF and potentially for a, a federal funding source that we're pursuing. So, the deferments are usually strategic in nature. And so, we're still on, we're still on course for dealing with the halo acetic acids. And I was on a call earlier today with that. So, we're working on those. And again, even though we're engaged and actively working on that, we have a pilot plant that, we just finished our second round of the pilot plant on Fri, last Friday. We have another, we have another sampling period coming up in September, and then we'll be complete, and we'll be moving into design. But these are still long lead time activities, right? So, we're finishing our, basically our research piece. We're gonna go into design, and then we're gonna be in construction. So, those are in those out-years that we showed on the graph there, but we're moving on it.
Thank you. Counselor Gomez, followed by Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Josh, you had stated that from Orlando Ramos's question, well, more of a statement, that you said that you were working with our federal elected officials and state elected officials. Aside from the HEROES Act, I don't know if it's, it's right for me to ask, but I'm just curious on if, or if you would like to talk to me offline about it and/or, I don't know, just what exactly are they doing? Like, because everybody's working with the state delegation and the federal delegation, but we never know what exactly is happening. So, maybe if we were in tune and having this conversation with our delegation, essentially, we do have relationships with them. But can you, you know, communicate to us if there's something that you guys are working on that we're not, maybe, I don't know if we're privy to it, or, or maybe we're missing something. I just want to know, what exactly are they, are they doing? You know, I, I, I'm just, and that's my question. I'm gonna, it's, it's an easy one. What exactly are they?
Yeah, so, the conversation, there's a multitude of conversations. I want to make sure I give Counselor Allen some time here too. But the conversations are about, you know, what is gonna be written into the HEROES Act? What is specifically gonna be increased in the WORDA, in the WORDA bill? And so, you know, those conversations have taken place between our utility and Congressman Neal. Those conversations have been taken, have taken place between you and, and what you guys have done. But then I think the, the piece that you guys aren't privy to is our involvement on the federal level with the advocacy groups that we belong to and have a leadership role in. And those advocacy groups are essentially lobbyists for the water sector. And they lobby, they lobbied Congress, they lobby Senate, and they, and they lobby, lobby the executive branch on our ability to change laws, to increase funding, et cetera, et cetera. And so I think that involvement is, right, we're, we're one small utility. It makes no sense for us. Our, our voice is loud locally, but in DC, it gets lost. And so, our voice resonates and is magnified by the agencies and the groups and advocacy groups that we belong to. And that is the typical mechanism that changes bills or gets bills increased or provides extra funding. And so that, those agencies that we belong to, and we belong to many of them, are, are the voice for the water sector in terms of changing the landscape of federal and state funding.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Counselor Allen, since you were the one that was pressing the most, I guess I'll say for this meeting, the floor is yours. And if you don't have any questions, then we'll open it up, but we really only have six minutes remaining.
Yeah, I probably can take the six minutes. But I wanted to hear where everybody else was, because I, everybody knows where I, where I've been. And so it's good to hear everybody else have, have their input. First off, Josh, we never questioned your budget or expenses, so everything, and, and you didn't say that we did, but I just wanted to be clear. Everything we questioned or I questioned was on how to pay. It was never, if it was questioning the investments or the day-to-day expenses. So, you know, I'm sure there's a couple of my written questions I submitted that maybe haven't been answered yet. Some have been answered. But to the things that you just presented to us, that one screen that had the 1.5 and the 1.4, the yellow line at 1.4, we, we didn't, we didn't really get, I know you want to stay at 1.5. We didn't really get below 1.4, which is a danger zone until about seven years out. So, could we consider, you compared 5.5 and 9.5. You didn't, at least you didn't in this presentation, compare like 7.5. Like, was there, I, I look at your projected increases out, 9.5, 9.5, 8.5. What if we went 7.5 in the first year? What if you went? And then obviously, that would cause some problems. You need to recover that money somewhere in the out-years. But you're out at 5.5, 4.5. You know, we did have a hearing, and there were a lot of people expressed concern at the hearing. Orlando got 950 or some odd people sign this petition for zero or freeze the rates or whatever. I'm trying to think of a, not questioning anything, what you put up, what, what you put there. I have, so that, my two questions, I guess at this point would be, could you consider a mid, a middle range here where, where you're responding to public input and not, you know, not risking your long-term viability of your finance, financials? And that's some, that's my first question. Would you just consider that? Could you look at that? And the second one is stabilization reserve, which I believe you're well above. I'm not sure, but I believe you're well above what you need to have for stabilization reserve, which was built because of your concern about Solusia or somebody going out of business and making, because they're such a large customer, that if they stop buying water, you need to have some money to make up for that. As far as I know, then, I think it's Eastman now. As far as I know, they're not out of business. And maybe taking a, you know, a million and a half or whatever out of stabilization, which wouldn't affect your downstream. downstream debt service, maybe that's doable. I don't know. Those are your questions. They're my questions. You guys have to decide what's right, but so those are the two. If we could sneak those two in before you have to go, and then we could go to.
Yeah. So in terms of the debt service ratio, it does indeed actually put you below 1.4 in the next fiscal year. So it immediately puts you below 1.4 in fiscal year '21, and then again.
7.5 does?
No, no, the 5.5.
Oh, 5.5, oh, that's what I'm saying, 7.5.
Yeah. So, I mean.
Right now, I know you might not have the answer right now, but that's.
I can't do the math in my head, but what I can tell you is, it's the same effect of squeezing a balloon. It's going to pop out somewhere else. There is.
That's what I'm saying, rate, you know, go to more of a level funding, seven, because you've got some out years that are, I mean, I know it's going to cause, the money's got to come from somewhere. Could you knock it down a couple of points here and make it up in the out years when we are going and advocating with you for federal and state money? Several of us have said we would do that. It's just an option. You don't have to answer it right now. You can think about it, talk to your financial team. I just, the other, only other time we went before 1.4 was, was like seven years out, and there's time to work on that, as you said. So that's the one question. And the other one is on stabilization reserve.
So, I just, I do want to point out that you're, but you're below 1.5 in every year, which is a violation of our own financial policies for three, any three-year period. So I do want to point that out. So the.
But that's at one, that's at 5.5.
Yes, yeah.
I'm talking about 7.5.
Okay.
Those numbers. So if you could look at those numbers and see what it does.
We, yeah, between now and tomorrow, we'll try to get you something, but.
That's great. That's all I'm asking for. That's a fair answer.
But yes, what I can tell you is, we have looked at that. We've looked at every iteration that there is. And, and so, I'm not going to have, I'm not going to have numbers for you off the top of my head, and I probably won't have them for you tomorrow. But I do want to say that this has been, and I think we've kind of shown, that we've looked at every possible alternative thoroughly, and I don't want to run out of time here. We've looked at every opportunity, every alternative thoroughly, and we've looked at, we've looked at 9.5s, we look at 5.5s, we looked at everything between and up, and every different funding source, all those tools that we pointed out to you. And so, I think it's safe to say, we've looked at it, and our recommendation to, my recommendation to the board, and the board is going to vote on it tomorrow. My recommendation to the board is 9.5. I feel very comfortable in knowing what the future is, knowing that we are a very transparent organization. We've showed you what the rate increases are. Those rate increases have been on our books for a while, but there, this is no surprise to us. COVID-19 and the 16.9 was a surprise to us. All of this other stuff, this is, this is, this is our bread and butter. So, we're comfortable with it, and we know it. And then, the other question was regarding, just tell me real quick here, and I got a minute before I got to hop on another meeting.
Stabilization.
Yeah, the stabilization is a short-term fix. So, using more, and I think this is the piece that that you could use a little help with, is it's not just cash on hand that saves the day. That buys you down in any single year. You need to raise the revenue in your rate structure to match that ratio of debt service coverage of 1.5.
So Josh, if I, if I could just stop you there, we deal with stabilization on the city council, so I'm well familiar with it. We always have this issue of one-time revenues versus long-term, and I get all that. I'm just saying, with the pandemic and stuff, and if, since stabilization was built because of Solusia, maybe it's worth considering a little of stabilization. Solusia didn't go out of business. I'm not trying to be cranky. I'm just saying, I think those two things have been answered, the 7.5, the stabilization.
Let me, let me speak to that real quick here, because I can't be too late for this next meeting.
And Mr. Shimmel, we're going to give you the final words. So, and once you answer this question, then we will wrap our meeting up, and I will make a brief final statement regarding future meetings of the council. So you can, when you are finished, we are done.
Sure. I appreciate that, and I appreciate everything from the council and your participation. I think that the city has absolutely different bond covenants than the Water and Sewer Commission and different financial policies. So I know that you guys deal with this in the financial world for a municipally governed entity. That's not what we are. Our governance is an independent, and we have different bond covenants and different, different financial policies that dictate different terms. That's the first thing. The second thing is, the stabilization fund was intended to offset the potential loss and raise our rates, raise our rate, our ratings based upon eliminating risk. But do not believe that that risk is just solely a single entity or a single customer. There's a great deal of risk associated with our aging infrastructure. And so, I had a slide prepared. It's just, it's too much. I had a slide prepared to talk specifically about that, Counselor. And it speaks to the fact that we're probably underfunded in terms of our risk associated with infrastructure and aging infrastructure versus that of a single entity as a customer that's 10% of our revenue. So we've thoroughly vetted that, and if, to be honest, we are probably at risk because our stabilization fund is a little light. But in either case, utilization of the stabilization fund does not solve the problem because it's a revenue issue, not a cash issue. So you could, you could take the entire thing and do a zero this year, and it's not going to help us next year. That's what I can tell you. You can use the whole 16 million. It doesn't solve the problem for next year. It makes it worse.
Thank you, Mr. Shimmel. Thank you to everybody else who was on the, on the call from the Water and Sewer Commission. We appreciate your time. And the vote tomorrow is at what time?
9 o'clock.
So if anybody wants to reach you or email you anytime between 9, now and 9 o'clock, they can feel free to do so. Counselors, I appreciate your time. Just want to remind you that we have a 5 o'clock special meeting. The links for the special meeting and potential executive session meeting have been sent to your email, to your email addresses. So in the event that you have any questions or unable to log in, if you want to log in early, you can feel free to give myself a call. So you guys have take a break for the next 25 minutes. Counselor Davila, did you have a question regarding what is?
Yeah, I was going to say 5 o'clock, but you clarified.
Okay, 5 o'clock. Absolutely. You have 25 minutes. Take it easy, everyone.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Check your emails.